Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the afternoon meeting of the Sacramento City Council. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a quorum?
Councilmember Ashby, Councilmember Warren, Councilmember Harris, Councilmember Hanson, Councilmember Jennings, Councilmember Guerra, Councilmember Chenier, and Mayor Steinberg.
I am here, thank you. We do have a quorum. I know Councilmember Carr will be absent this evening. Let us all rise if Pastor Faith Whitmore would lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. We would sure appreciate it. Go ahead.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you very much, Faith. We appreciate that. Yes, Councilmember Vice Mayor Hanson would like to make a very quick motion for the courtesy of those who are in the audience may hear for an item that is going to be continued. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Some people may be here for an appeal of a tree-removal permit, which was item number 15 on the agenda. In working with the project applicant and the appallants, we've decided to continue that because of good cause, and a substantial number of people, according to the city attorney's office, I have to read this, will not be inconvenienced by the continuance. So I'm asking that we, I'll move that we move it to the 13th of November to be heard, and hopefully somebody will second that, and we can pass it.
Moved and seconded, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstained, that matter is continued. Thank you very much. For those who came for that item, you're welcome to stay. Let us now go to, we have three special presentations and then a quick announcement by Councilmember Harris as well. Let us begin with an item and an issue that doesn't get enough attention in terms of discussion at the council, but maybe one of the most important things that we are responsible for, and that is flood protection. This is the FEMA presentation, Councilmembers Harris and Ashby. Whoever wishes to go first.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. This is fun for me, because FEMA, and Councilmember Harris knows this too, when you represent Natomas, you get to spend a lot of time with FEMA, and the Army Corps of Engineers, and our Department of Utilities. So we have these extraordinary relationships with FEMA and with Bill Bousseth in this regard. One of the things that the city of Sacramento does is works with the Sacramento Area Flood Control Agency, and the county, and our Utilities Department, to deal with floodplain protection. So flood insurance runs through the city of Sacramento. Connie Perkins, who I'm sure you will meet in just a minute, has taken a lot of calls, and a lot of heat, too, over the years, based on situations, or mapping, or whatever situation we're in, in our region relative to flood control and emergency preparedness. And I will say, the first five years of my council life, I spent a lot of time in DC at the FEMA offices, and they were a terrific partner. We wouldn't be where we are now, which is out of a building moratorium and well on our way to 200-year levels of protection. We wouldn't be there without really strong relationships between our Utilities Department and FEMA. And so today, we have a special guest, Mayor. We have Bob Fenton, who is here, maybe he'll come up, Bob, from FEMA's Admin Region 9. This is extraordinary. FEMA, you know, is a group that doesn't, they're not often at all the city council meetings. This is a really big deal, and a really welcome surprise for us to get to welcome here.
Welcome, Mayor.
And Councilmember Harris has served as the SAFCA Board Chair a number of times, and in leadership on that board, more than, I think, anybody besides myself or Heather Fargo, which that'll tell you everything you need to know about Natomas, right? So I wanted, we both wanted to welcome you here, and I think maybe you want to...
Yeah, I'll just say a comment. First, I'd like to thank FEMA for giving us preferred rates in the city of Sacramento. You have recognized that we are very robust in attacking flood control projects, to protect the Natomas Basin, to protect the entire city of Sacramento. We understand that we're a flood-prone city, but we are moving full steam ahead, and of course, we have appropriations on the federal side to pursue a tremendous number of projects to get us, I believe, past 200-year protection, which is what, you know, makes the most sense to FEMA. Thank you for the flood protection insurance program. Everybody here has availed themselves of it, almost all of the city residents. We appreciate the fact that you recognize our progress in protecting our own city and helping us economically to get there.
Yeah, one thing that happens with FEMA is, as they oversee the National Flood Insurance Program, they give communities ratings, and then your, whether or not you have flood insurance is based on that rating. So my district, it's mandatory. Everybody in Natomas has to have flood insurance, and it's up to FEMA to help us with what those rates are and what our classification is inside of that process. And so that's why this is such an important relationship, and we want to invite up Bill Bousseth, the head of our Utilities Division, as well as Connie Perkins and Kelly Scherfie to come up, too, and help us introduce this item and just talk a little bit about why this is so important for the people of Sacramento, and what a great day it is to announce this community rating system standing change.
Thank you, Councilmembers Ashby and Harris. I'll just be very brief, because I know Bob has some words that he'd like to say. This is our CRS program, which gives us discounts on our flood control, on our flood insurance in the city of Sacramento. We have been at a Level 5 for a long time, which is excellent, as a matter of fact, but due to the efforts of Connie and Kelly, we are now moving to a Level 2.
Yay!
Which is, there's only seven other cities that I know of, or that we know of in the country that are Level 2, and so this is a huge deal, and it saves a lot of money for our residents and their flood insurance rates. And with that, I'll turn the time over to Bob.
Thank you. Well, good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg, Councilmembers, Mr. Chan, city staff, ladies and gentlemen. Again, my name's Robert Fenton. I'm the Regional Administrator for FEMA Region 9. It's really my pleasure to be here today to recognize the city's achievement in earning the Class 2 status for the National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System. This is really a prestigious level, and one that very few communities achieve. It's a little-known fact, but did you know the nation's most frequent and costliest disaster are floods? We've kind of seen that play out the last couple of years. Flooding costs the US billions of dollars each year, and floods can strike without warning, often outside of recognized flood zones, and just an inch of water can cause about $25,000 of damage to your home. Also, as you know, in California, we have a saying here, "Floods follow fires," and wildfires leave the ground charred, barren, and unable to absorb water, creating conditions ripe for flash flooding and mud flows. You and your community understands these risks and have taken concrete actions through your longstanding leadership and commitment to raise awareness and prepare for the impacts of flooding. Your residents are safer, your neighborhoods are more resilient to the damage of floods. The city of Sacramento has chosen to partner with FEMA and are actively mitigating your flood risk through the community rating system. The community rating system was established in 1990 and recognizes and encourages communities to implement ongoing flood reduction activities that exceed the National Flood Insurance Program's baseline standards. Participating in CRS communities are rewarded with flood insurance premium discounts for residents and businesses. Additional benefits include increased public safety, reduce human suffering, and reduce economic disruption. The bottom line is CRS communities are more resilient and recover faster from floods. The city of Sacramento joined CRS in 1991, and as a Class 9, which is a 5% flood insurance premium discount at that point. Ever since then, the leadership in the city has worked hard and made commitments that advance your CRS standing, which has resulted in lower flood insurance premiums and increased public safety and community resilience. On October 1 of 2018, the city once again exceeded the FEMA National Flood Insurance Program floodplain management standards and achieved a Class 2 ranking, which results in about a 40% flood insurance premium discount rate. As I mentioned in the beginning, only five communities have, five to seven communities have achieved this level nationally. You should be proud of the CRS floodplain management staff around me here today, and advancing to different classes is hard. The Class 2 rating means that 21,900 property owners in the city's special flood hazard areas will receive a 40% or an average of $460 per year on their flood insurance premiums. On a citywide basis, premium savings amount to approximately $1.4 million a year. The savings to policyholders can potentially be spent on goods and services and boost other local economies. Your CRS program proactively addresses many important aspects of good floodplain management. But there's four components that deserve special recognition here today. The first is, the city has a strong program that protects lands in the floodplain as non-developal, open space. Second, the city implements an ongoing citywide public outreach program that informs citizens how they can better prepare themselves for floods, stay safer during floods, and recover faster after the damage impacting floods. Third, the city staff provides flood insurance advice and helpful flood protection publications to the citizens. And finally, the city has an extensive stormwater management program that includes regular levee channel and flood control basin monitoring and maintenance. These are just a few of the policy and program management measures you have taken, and we look forward to supporting you as the work continues. So it is my sincere pleasure to present the CRS Class 2 plaque to the city of Sacramento for its dedication to making Sacramento a safer and more resilient place to live and work. Congratulations.
That's great. That's quite a...
Mayor, maybe you could go down and we could grab a picture? Mayor, maybe we could come behind you or something? But I just wanted people to understand, this is really good staff work that leads to people in the city of Sacramento getting a huge financial break on their flood insurance. And so Connie, Kelly, Bill, great work, Department of Utilities, really great work. Should we go down there? Okay.
Thank you.
What's that?
That's right. Well, harder than rebate, if you will, to the many people in Sacramento, and that's really, really very good news. And I know our work isn't done yet, right, Councilmembers? More work to do, but it certainly shows tremendous progress. Let's move now to item two, which is recognizing Code Compliance Month, and Councilmember Jennings and/or Ashby are going to take this one.
I think this is something that Councilmember Carr was bringing forward, but he's not feeling well today, so I am pinch-hitting, right? But where is, where's Carl Simpson? Carl, will you come up? Help me get this started, because we talked, I was going to do a portion of this, and Councilmember Carr had the other section. But we have two pieces here, Mayor, and one is that we're going to recognize Code Enforcement Awareness Month, which in and of itself is very important for all of us, especially certain council districts, that, like Councilmember Warren, who works so hard on this issue, is a big deal, and he's really good at putting the resources in his district. But there's a second half to this that's also really exciting, so I want people to stay tuned to that second half. Carl, on behalf of the city council, we want to thank you. You know how loved you are by this council, or at least I hope you know, and your team and your staff is exceptional. So this resolution was put together for you, and I'm going to read it, since I'm sure Councilmember Carr's talking points came from it. Our code and compliance officials ensure the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens through education and enforcement of state and local laws regulating buildings, zoning, housing, abandoned vehicles, and other things. The code compliance provides valuable programs and services that better community, including rental housing inspection, it's one of your big programs, weed abatement, graffiti abatement, dangerous and substandard buildings, entertainment permits, business compliance, and neighborhood code compliance, really important things for the city of Sacramento. The city's code compliance is actively involved in neighborhood events and community meetings, as well as facilitating neighborhood cleanups, knock-talk, and walk outreach, and abatements with the goal of enriching the community that we all serve. So on behalf of, really, the city council and all of us who rely so much on you and your team, and I see you have a bunch of them here, like hardest-working people in Sacramento, these guys do a fantastic job helping us keep Sacramento beautiful, we want to recognize Code Enforcement Awareness Month, and thank you for your really hard and great work. Do you want to say something after your question?
So, Mr. Mayor, Council, you know, as we move forward, it seems like more and more code enforcement gets called upon to do things. Tonight, we had a very robust discussion about tobacco enforcement, which, if it passes, and I assume it will, is going to require another degree of enforcement to enforce the codes that you, the council, pass. And so my folks do a good job, and I'm very proud to be part of their team, and I certainly appreciate all the support the council provides us on a continuing basis. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Certainly, yours is an area that, as I know, I talked to my colleagues and the city manager. This is an area where the city could use more investment and more resources, certainly, is code enforcement, because it really provide a quality-of-life service here, where properties or behaviors of people in neighborhoods are not living up to respectable, basic community standards. It's your job, in addition, obviously, to the men and women of the police department, the fire department, to make it better, but your role is sometimes underrated, if you will, in the community, and it's really vital. And as, hopefully, as we gain some additional resources in this city, we will invest more directly in code enforcement, because it can make a huge difference in the neighborhoods of Sacramento. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So I have this great announcement that you teed up really well, but there are also several colleagues chimed in to speak, so they may want to say something to Carl before I make your big announcement.
Okay, well...
Whichever way you want to go, Mayor.
Let's wait, let's hear from the, what do you want? You want the big announcement first, or should we? What's that? Let's hear the big announcement.
Announcement first?
Yes, okay, then...
So the big announcement, do I get to say it? Or I'll just intro it, and then you're going to help me say it, right? Okay. So we have, these guys know this, so I'll say this for people who are listening, the city of Sacramento has a terrific program that we all call JFN. It stands for Justice for Neighbors. It's a very innovative approach to really bringing justice to communities, and it's individualized, so the problems that exist in communities really differ based on which neighborhood you're in, and each council member has different issues, questions, concerns, based on a whole lot of things. But JFN, Justice for Neighbors, is a partnership, really, with code enforcement, the police department, and our city attorney's office, and the three of them get together, and I just call it the Problem-Solving Division, and I forever have said, I think this is an area we should invest more support, because it is really pulling the best of the three agencies putting them together. So, for example, when we had illegal marijuana grows all over our city, we turned to Justice for Neighbors. They are the ones that wrote the code, came up with the right law in the legal department, the best in the whole state, and then implemented by code enforcement in partnership with the police department, and it was just flawless. They just did such an incredible job, something we could all be really proud of. And this whole section over here is full of people who work really hard on Justice for Neighbors. So the exciting announcement is that we submitted Justice for Neighbors for consideration, right?
Yes, we submitted Justice for Neighbors, actually, the city attorney submitted Justice for Neighbors, Michael Benner, for an award for the most innovative award with the State of California Code Enforcement Association. And a couple of weeks ago, Justice for Neighbors: City Sacramento was selected as the winner of that award of all municipalities within the state of California for the most innovative program.
What's the...
So, Mayor, they actually are going to be presented their award here tonight, and we have a couple people from the city attorney's office to sort of describe what the award, what they submitted, and then we have the president of the Code Enforcement Association for the State of California here to present the award, and then I think a lot of people who'd love a picture with the council.
Does the award come with a couple million dollars?
It comes with a recommendation to spend a couple million dollars.
Okay.
Gus, do you want to talk about JFN really quick, and then maybe we can present the award?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilmembers. The Justice for Neighbors Award is really, let me just tell you briefly what Justice for the, for the audience, JFN is a program, a multidisciplinary team, police department, fire, city attorney's office, code enforcement, that we get together and solve the worst of the worst social nuisance problems in the city of Sacramento. So if you have a worse, the worst problem that you can think of, whether it's drugs, gangs, or dilapidated buildings, it comes to us, and we prioritize that program, or that property into our program. So we were recognized as the most innovative program by the code enforcement. It's called CASIO, the organization. So we're really proud of this, of this award. We want to thank the mayor and council for your leadership in all aspects of public safety, but your investment also into the Justice for Neighbors program. We meet monthly with management of the police department, fire, city attorney's office, and we dedicate resources that you provide to us in order to resolve these problems. So we're not here to celebrate, because we all know we need room for improvement, so there's always that room, but we're here really to just acknowledge the excellent work by our partners. Thanks.
Thank you, Gus. Thank you. That's terrific.
Isn't that great? So the most innovative program in code enforcement in the state of California goes to the city of Sacramento for our Justice for Neighbors program. It's fantastic. Really proud of them. And Mayor...
Yes. Thank you.
Would you like to have councilmembers speak first, or would you like to have the presentation of the award first?
Let's have councilmembers speak, and then we'll end it with the presentation of the award, okay? Councilman Guetta?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I again want to extend my gratitude to all the folks in code, but also the Justice for Neighbors program, both PD and the city attorney's office, and I've had the opportunity to go out on a number of ride-alongs for different JFN cases in my district, including one of an illegal marijuana grow at the time. When, in some of these situations, neighbors are living day-to-day with the impacts of some of these code violations. And also, I know Carl, he also works with our Solid Waste Authority, our Solid Waste folks, on the issue of illegal dumping, and the fact that some communities are being left behind when it comes to addressing the issue of illegal dumping, but our code officers are going out there, making sure that landlords and vacant lots are doing their part to make sure that they maintain the area clean. Most importantly, though, the issue about code officers, our JFN team, our police department who are involved in this, is that they're making the quality of life in our neighborhoods stronger and better, and so that when people come home, they come home to a place of comfort and a place of security. And to me, I want to just thank you guys for all that you do out there, and the fact that you guys are nonstop, every day, I talk to folks, when the mayor came to a couple of neighborhood meetings, people always say, your JFN team and your code team is doing great work. So, again, congratulations. It's no surprise that the state is recognizing you. Congratulations on the award.
Wow. Good stuff. Thank you. Byrne?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I, too, want to say thank you to the team, in fact, that represents JFN and the good work they're doing, and, you know, I know that District 2 has benefited greatly from the work that you all have done, and I was an early caller of JFN immediately upon my election to city council, and District 2 is no stranger to code and the JFN, city attorney's office, as well as the police department. And personally, though, I really want to thank Carl, because Carl has been very responsive. I think you've been a tremendous leader. This is a representative element of your leadership, and with Councilwoman Ashby, and Councilwoman Carr, and the city attorney's office, and even recognizing the innovation of this program, and even going after an award like this, and then being chosen is also, I think, a testament to the leadership that all of you in the city attorney's office, Carl and your group, as well as the police department. So congratulations to you, thank you to you, and congratulations to the city of Sacramento. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Thank you. Councilmember Jennings?
Thank you, Mayor. I, too, want to join in with all the congratulations on the programming, and especially on the leadership. Carl, your leadership is second to none, and that's why we call you the Community Development Code and Housing Enforcement Chief. And I think all of us realize that a leader is only as good as the people who they lead. So the people who are here in the audience, the officers who are here in the audience that do the work every single day of weed abatement and maintenance of over 4,000 vacant lots, of abandonment of graffiti, of enforcement of illegal vending, of dangerous building monitoring and enforcement, of abatement of illegal dumping, both in public and private properties, in rental housing and substandard housing enforcement, of 63,000 rental units, of removal of illegal dumping in both private and public properties, and the enforcement of junk and rubbish. And that's only half of the list, because I don't want to read the entire list at this point in time. The leader is only as good as the, those who work with him or her, and so I'd like all of his officers, at this point in time, to please stand that are with you tonight, please stand, all the officers. I want to give them a big round of applause, if you will. We will give this resolution to your leader, but this resolution goes to each and every one of you for the great work that you've done to make Sacramento the place that it is today, and we honor you for the work that you've done, and we thank you from the bottom of our heart.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. On the Law and Legislation Committee, we make a lot of ordinance, and of course, ordinance are the laws by which we govern our behavior here in the city of Sacramento. But they're not worth anything unless we can enforce, you know, our ordinance. That's how important code compliance is. I would guesstimate that fully 30% of the calls I get in my office are code compliance issues, and if we can't deliver on this, then we're not meeting the needs of our constituents. Again, that's how important code compliance is. As far as Justice for Neighbors, I've used it sparingly. In four years, I've used it four times, but man, has it been effective. I'm talking about the most tenacious, pernicious problems in my district where I had no solution. When I turned to JFN, I got results, and twice, I only had to threaten a JFN action to get results. That's how important this program is. So I'm deeply grateful. Carl, you and Jose being at the top of the team, you have a great team, you are truly vital to the success of the city of Sacramento, so thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. A lot of what I wanted to say has been said, but Carl, your people make you...
Say it again.
Okay. Carl, I was going to say, your people make you look real good. You've done a phenomenal job since you came over from the dark side of the county, and that's a good chuckle. I just think our staff in code enforcement are top-notch. You know, every time we have an issue, we work with neighbors, code enforcement's there to make sure that we clean up the problem, whether it's an abandoned vehicle, substandard housing, an illegal marijuana grow, a fence that's too tall. There's nothing too big or too small that code enforcement isn't willing to tackle, because it helps maintain and keep the city heading in the right direction. So congratulations, everybody. And you look pretty cool in your uniforms, with the badges and vests.
I hope I, before we present the award, I hope I speak on behalf of everyone, and when I say, you know, when, 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 we're in an environment where augmentations to our levels of service in Sacramento become a possibility, that this issue of code enforcement and Justice for Neighbors be at or near at the very top of the list, because this is core to the quality of life in our city. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could introduce the person who's presenting this award?
Yes.
And then just before I do, really quick, so folks understand, everyone up here knows what JFN, but I just want to give two quick examples of, for you, just quick numbers. Beau Parkhurst, Beau, stand up for one second, because I always feel the world needs to know he is. This is one of our JFN lawyers, but just to give you an idea of, like, what one person can do, and he had help from SACPD, but most of this comes back to just legal work through JFN. One... housing, an illegal marijuana grow, a fence that's too tall. There's nothing too big or too small that code enforcement isn't willing to tackle because it helps maintain and keep the city heading in the right direction. So congratulations, everybody. And you look pretty cool in your uniforms with the badges and vests.
I hope I, before we present the award, I hope I speak on behalf of everyone when I say, you know, when, 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 we're in an environment where augmentations to our levels of service in Sacramento become a possibility, that this issue of code enforcement and justice for neighbors be at or near at the very top of the list because this is core to the quality of life in our city. Thank you.
Mayor, if I could introduce the person who's presenting this award?
Yes.
And then just before I do, really quick, so folks understand, everyone up here knows what JFN, but I just want to give two quick examples of, for you, just quick numbers. Beau Parkhurst, Beau, stand up for one second because I always feel the world needs to know who he is. This is one of our JFN lawyers, but just to give you an idea of like what one person can do, and he had help from SacPD, but most of this comes back to just legal work through JFN. One individual, 21 felony counts of squatting in my district, terrorizing neighborhoods and taking advantage of families by renting to them homes that didn't belong to this individual and scaring, scaring a lot of people. But 21 felonies from his work. So fantastic, thanks, Beau. And then another great example, when we didn't know what to do, as Councilmember Gara said about all the illegal grows, it was Gus and Mike who did all the research around the rest of the state about what they were doing, and they came up with this better way of charging a per-plant fee, something nobody else was really doing. They built off of that. And as a result, Mayor, this is the kind of result I know you love to hear, they have charged out fees in excess of several million dollars, but in the account right now, there is nearly half a million dollars collected on illegal grows across the city of Sacramento based on that JFN program that we invested again less than a year ago, thanks to these two gentlemen and the help of the Sacramento Police Department, code enforcement, and fire. So...
There's that prize money I was talking about.
There's the prize money that you were talking about, yes. So here to present this award to our JFN, to our city attorney and team, is a person who also knows Carl very well, but she is the president of the statewide organization for code enforcement, Carrie Simpson. Would you come up and say a couple words and present this award to probably Gus from our city attorney's office and Carl Simpson?
Thank you. And Mayor, city council, there's not much left to say. There's been some wonderful things said about the Justice for Neighbors program. Carrie Simpson, on behalf of the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, I'm also the code enforcement chief of the city of Rancho Cordova. We have already stolen one of your programs. We do the marijuana program where we have also had much success. I am going to, for one time in my life, disagree with a city attorney who said, "We're not here to celebrate." We are here to celebrate. And so on behalf of the California Association of Code Enforcement Officers, I would love to present you with the award for the most innovative program. And people up and down the state are watching. You presented a wonderful session at our recent conference and people are copying and watching what you're doing, so keep doing what you're doing. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Paletta, Carl, and Gus, come get your award.
All of you nice looking.
Officer.
Officers.
Do you want me to take this?
I got it.
You want me to get up there, Gus?
No.
Go ahead.
Alan, we got arrested?
No. Look who came back.
Hey!
Lucy, buddy, nice job.
Yeah.
Officers.
Do you want me to take this?
I got it.
You want me to get up there, Gus?
No.
Go ahead.
Alan, we got arrested?
No.
Look who came back.
Hey!
Lucy, buddy, nice job.
We do have one more important resolution here. They're all important here. It's Recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Councilmember Gueda?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask Joyce Blue, Director of Client Services for the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center, and also the American Leadership Forum Recognition and Honor of Our Leadership Award this year, Ms. Faith Whitmore, the Chief Executive Officer of the Sacramento Regional Family Justice Center, come up here today. You know, this is a very important month and a sobering resolution that we have here today. And it's about recognizing the, you know, Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And it's not just about recognizing those who have, have fallen victim to domestic violence and have died at the hands of domestic violence, but also celebrating those who have, are survivors of domestic violence. And the importance of Domestic Violence Awareness Month is that it's incumbent upon everyone and all of us to make a difference. And we have a little video that the Regional Family Justice Center and my alma mater, Go Hornets SacState, put together about why it takes an entire community and how it takes an entire community about this month. So Nell's going to help us out with a quick little just video to talk about it.
Domestic violence, elder abuse, human trafficking, sexual assault.
What will it take to end this violence? More than one and three of us are exposed to some kind of family violence in our lifetime.
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
...
And human trafficking. So, thank you so much for doing your part.
Thank you for, to the Family Justice Center, thank you to you for making sure that this hidden epidemic is no longer a hidden epidemic.
Mr. Mayor, there are some startling statistics here. You know, and this isn't conservative numbers. Nearly three in 10 women, and one in 10 men as well, are experiencing domestic violence. And every, and 24 people every minute are becoming victims to rape, physical violence, and stalking by someone that's intimate towards them. Their partner, their family member, someone they know. And that's the challenge with domestic violence, and why it's incumbent upon all of us when we see it to act immediately. And today is not just about awareness, but also, I'm also making a challenge to everyone here. I know Councilmember Harris has already committed to support, and he's gonna be, and he's already, I think, purchased a ticket for the Hope Drives Here celebration in November. I want to thank you that, for that. And I want to encourage every one of our members of the City Council to participate in the annual Hope Drives Here where our victims and survivors speak about their issue and talk about how we can stop this. We also focus on Camp Hope, because we know that kids who witness domestic violence are also find themselves repeating that same issue. And we want to end that cycle with that effort. But I don't want to stop there, Mr. Mayor, because one thing we found out in the, just the last couple weeks, is that many of our domestic violence victims have a challenge in getting the actual, some of the times, the recordings from our own dispatch, because they have a financial hardship. And what we, what I'd like to do, not, not just with a resolution, but also ask Mr. City Manager if you could put on the Legislation and Law Committee, a conversation about how do we help victims who have a financial hardship to get those call logs, so that when a person goes to court, that they, that if they can't afford to get the dispatcher's call information, they can have it, and we can use, use it to help their case and prevent the cycle of violence with them. With, with that, Mr. City Ma, Mr. Mayor, I will let my colleagues speak before I read the resolution. But a big round of applause to our fighters on domestic violence here.
Okay, great, great, great. Councilmember Ashby?
Thank you, Mayor. It's so important, domestic violence. It touches every one of us. And Councilmember Gary, you're such a powerful champion of this topic, and I appreciate you bringing it forward. And I, I just want to say one thing about this particular organization, the Family Justice Center. I think it works powerfully, because it is the vision of Jan Scully, a former DA who got tired of seeing victims have nowhere to go. There's no justice in that. There's no justice in dealing with a person who has committed an atrocity of human trafficking or domestic violence, if the victim themselves never gets to recover. And so this is her vision. And what's great about this agency is it's not an agency that competes with everybody else who's doing great work. They're a convener. So, the Family Justice Center is a convener of, of all the others. So, City of Refuge, My Sister's House, St. John's, Women's Empowerment, they all come to this organization, so they don't have to pay for things like mental health services for their clients. They all get it. You have the partnership with Mercy Housing, or the restraining orders, or the help. And it helps us narrow in on where we can provide additional help. So, the things like Councilmember Gary is saying, starts to rise to the top as an issue that is preventing these folks from getting the help and justice that they need. So, I, I want to thank Jan Scully, and I know you guys will take that back to her, and both of you who work day in and day out to make that vision come true, for everybody who's been a victim here, but particularly those women and children across the city of Sacramento who need somebody to help them wade through all of that paperwork. Thank you so very, very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Gary, the last part of the resolution, and we'll present it, then we need to move into our agenda here.
Very good. Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and not only as a proud board member of the Family Justice Center, but having seen family members who are survivors of this, the resolution, I'll read one whereas, and then the final here. Whereas Domestic Violence Awareness Month is a time to mourn those who have died due to domestic violence, and to celebrate those who have survived. And now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the City Council of City of Sacramento, that we do hereby recognize the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the City of Sacramento. Congratulations, Family Justice Center, for all the great work you do, and to all the survivors.
Thank you, Mayor. This is really brief. You may have noticed a little hubbub in front of the Capitol this week. Well, it's the Firefighter Combat Challenge. It's an international event. It's the only federally funded, university-based, occupational health physiological research study that has become an international touring and televised sports event. It's demanding five-event physical challenge that firefighters throughout the world participate in, and try to compete for the fastest time. Competition events include a stair climb with a high-rise pack, a hose hoist, forcible entry, hose advance, and victim rescue. The primary purpose for the firefighter combat challenge is to promote physical fitness, an essential part of structural firefighting. So, it's being held downtown. If you want more information, go to firefighterchallenge.com. And I'd just like to recognize that our fire chief and two deputy chiefs are in the audience, and thank you for your service.
Good. Very good. Thank you very much. Thank you for that announcement. So let us move now to the consent calendar. Are there items on the consent calendar that any member would like to take off the consent calendar and/or discuss? Counsel?
I have one comment on number eight.
On number eight, okay. We got a comment on, sorry?
Okay, there you go.
Yeah.
So, it's the North 12th Street Complete Streets Project. This has been talked about for at least two and a half years.
Longer.
Yeah, longer, says, says our vice mayor. It's a good project, and I'm definitely in support of this. I did get a call from a constituent today who's worried about restricted access to his driveway. I just wanted to make sure that staff is contacting every business member who could be affected by the North 12th Streets Project, to address their issues, so that there are no surprises when we get to build out.
Okay. Number seven. You want to make a comment there, Councilmember Warren? Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to comment on item seven, which is awarding a contract for some works in some parks. One of the parks is in District Two, at Woodlake Park. And I want to just thank staff for coming back, getting that on the agenda. There was an opportunity for us to actually do this work earlier. However, there was some more pressing work that was needed at Hagenwood Park, where we had to build a restroom there. And, and so we put this off until now, and, and it's happening with this vote. So, I just want to thank staff for staying on it and bringing it back. So, thank you.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So, we do have three items, three members of the public who want to speak on item one, but is there a motion and a second on the consent calendar?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Okay, let's hear the public testimony, please.
First speaker is Robert Copeland, then Josh Wood, and then Michelle Parasett.
Mr. Copeland.
I belong to the Sacramento Tenants Union, and we are in full support of this charter amendment that's going to be voted on hopefully in 2020. Because I'm sick and tired of people one rent increase away from being evicted, or they can't pay the rent, and the California apartment associates doesn't seem to care. I mean, really. After the election, we're going to go back to the apartments and find out which apartment complexes actually need help. Like, we don't want to see another Cedar Ridge or Stone Gate Apartments that Ace found a couple of years ago, in Larry Carr's district. That is unacceptable to us. And as far as code enforcement, good job. Good job. Because we're gonna, we're gonna need code enforcement, a lot. And I hope every single city council member adores its Prop 10, like the largest city in California, Los Angeles, just did. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert.
Josh Wood, and then Michelle Parasett.
Josh Wood, welcome. The enforcement's doing good. So, this is Josh Wood with Region Business, on behalf of us, and as well as the Citizens for Affordable Housing Coalition. Just wanted to reiterate that on June 4th, we sent your council letter, making clear that this initiative is in violation of the California State Constitution. It is a revision to the charter, not an amendment. We believe it's clearly in violation. And the other thing I wanted to mention is, we really hope that this council will continue to move forward with steps to eliminate fees on affordable housing, because we need more of that housing, so that we can solve this issue. We have to build our way out of this, and we have to act now.
Mr. Wood, stay tuned. Next week, October 30th, there is going to be a significant measure on the agenda that addresses providing financial incentives to build more affordable housing. We come back next week. Thanks.
Michelle Parasett.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Michelle Parasett with Public Advocates, here on behalf of the Housing for Sacramento Coalition, resident of District Six, and a landlord. We were happy that you're taking this vote tonight, that we're going to be on the ballot. Over 44,000 of, of our city-registered voters signed petitions to put, to put this on the ballot. We feel that it's legally sound, and, yeah. Thank you.
So, our role tonight with this measure is not taking a substantive position on the initiative. It's the ministerial action required under the Elections Code to essentially affirm that county clerk's declaration, determination, that there are valid signatures. If there are to be, if there is to be litigation about the propriety of the initiative, et cetera, that will play out between now and 2020, because this would qualify for the 2020 ballot. So, this is an appropriate action tonight. And thank you for the testimony. All in favor?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry. Your vice chair?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Given the ongoing question about revision versus amendment, Madam City Attorney, would you provide us a memo just addressing that, because I've heard it come up before? Thank you.
Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, the consent calendar passes. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Okay, we do have a couple of public hearing items tonight. One is item 14, which is the Tourism Infrastructure District. Who's presenting on this? And, and will this be the last time it's presented?
We'll be back next week.
Inside joke, but, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, members of the City Council, Ceni MacCini with the Finance Department. The item before you is a public hearing for the proposed formation of the Sacramento Tourism Infrastructure District. The proposed district will provide funding for capital improvements specifically for the construction of a ballroom as part of the Sacramento Convention Center expansion. The district will consist of approximately 268 lodging businesses, citywide, and parts of the unincorporated portion of the county. Petitions to form the Tourism Infrastructure District were submitted from lodging businesses representing more than 72% of the proposed district assessment. On September 4th of this year, council approved the resolution of intention to form the district, and joint notices of public meeting and public hearing were mailed to known business owners in the proposed district on September 7th. On September 25th of this year, the required public meeting was held to allow for testimony or comments on either the proposed assessment or district itself. So, at this time, staff recommends opening the public hearing. Upon the close of the hearing, the city clerk's office will tabulate any written protest received, and staff will report back to council on October 30th with the results. With that said, if you have any questions, we're happy to address them.
So, they, just to put this into lay, bless you, to put this into a layperson's terms here, what this is all about. This is a big piece of the very constructive discussion that the city has had with Visit Sacramento and the Hotel Association, about how to get a, a full Convention Center expansion project completed at once, including the ballroom. At the same time, leaving some resources available under our TOT debt capacity to invest potentially in other destination amenities. We've talked about that at the council. And this piece is a significant piece of the overall financial puzzle, and as I've many times praised, Visit Sacramento and the hotel years for stepping up in the way that you have, because it continues to be a great collaboration. But this is the third time, I believe, that this has come before us, because there were some technical glitches with the way this was, this was done the first few times. Did, did we get it correct this time?
I believe so. This is the third time's a charm, so.
Okay, well, I'll take that to the bank. Okay. Very good. We do have 12, Vice Mayor, if you'll wait, you want to wait. We, we do have 12 people who want to speak on, on this item, validating, hopefully, that we have gotten it right this time. Come on up. Who's, who's coming?
My first speaker is Mike Testa, then Julian, I believe, Self, then David Fletcher.
Mayor Steinberg, members of the council, city manager, CHAM, my name is Mike Testa. I'm the president and CEO of Visit Sacramento. Yes, indeed, this is the third time. The good news is that every time we did a petition drive, the support percentage grew. Early on, in the discussion of expanding the Convention Center, the city had planned to build this project in two phases, with a 40,000-square-foot ballroom on the building's second floor, scheduled for Phase Two. As part of that process, Convention Center customers were given the opportunity to provide feedback, and a common theme emerged. The absence of the ballroom in the project's first phase would severely inhibit our clients, our clients' ability to keep and grow their business in Sacramento. In a great display of public-private partnership, the lodging community stepped in to create an infrastructure district to fund the ballroom in Phase One of this project. This $50 million asset will generate more conventions, increased lodging occupancy, and new TOT growth for the city and county of Sacramento. The new ballroom will also allow Visit Sacramento to pursue groups that previously couldn't consider Sacramento due to space limitations, as it creates a new ability to host two concurrent events under one roof. It also creates additional demand for new hotel product, which is critical to Sacramento in growing its transient occupancy tax, and to ultimately make this Convention Center expansion successful. On behalf of the Sacramento Hotel Association, the Visit Sacramento Board of Directors, and the more than three-quarters of the qualified lodging properties that voted to approve this district, we urge your support tonight. Thank you.
Mike?
Julian, Julian, I believe, itself, then David Fletcher, then Brian Larson.
Please.
Julian?
I think I've been up in front of you before. You know where this is going to head. Mayor, City Council, as an Airbnb host, I'm pretty disappointed with this process. The number is not 268. There are, in fact, several hundred Airbnb hosts who simply aren't here tonight to protest this, because they simply aren't aware that this assessment is going to be imposed on them if the STID moves forward. They have not been communicated with. Some of these folks are miles away from the Convention Center, and about as likely to have a convention attendee stay in their home as the Easter Bunny. These are folks that are making just a few dollars by offering a spare bed to a complete stranger. There are some folks that will be happy, though. I think we all know it will just take 10 specific votes from hundreds, who will be assessed for the STID for this plan to move forward. However, I would like to draw our council's attention to a few issues. The Sacramento STID report, and I hope you've all read it, I'm sure you have. This is the report that was put together in San Francisco for the Marconi rebuild. I don't want to talk about that in detail, but I specifically want to draw your attention to this. Under P, P-Bid law, Section 36632, properties are to be assessed on estimated benefit. Those miles from the Convention Center will not benefit. Further, under Section C, properties owned solely for residential use shall not be subject to any assessment. There are dozens of P-Bid entities throughout California. Airbnb, in almost every instance, does not take assessments from Airbnb hosts. In San Francisco, when they rebuilt, built the Marconi Center, Airbnb hosts are specifically excluded. This is probably because of Section 36632. There's a lot of nuance in this. I would welcome any questions.
Time is complete.
I'm done. If you have any questions from me, I'd be more than glad to answer them. I would welcome a more broader discussion with the community on this. This simply hasn't happened.
Thank you. Our next speaker is David Fletcher, Brian Larson, then Doug Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. I'm Dave Fletcher. I'm an Airbnb host, and I'm opposed to this as it sits, in the sense that we're taxed the 12% already with the occupancy rate. We have very low rates on our room nights. We're individual people. It's a residential kind of situation. It's not really a commercial situation. So, we'd like to see an amendment or some kind of district put together that would exclude the Airbnb hosts, and include those people which were mainly affected by this, which would be mainly affected by this improvement in the Convention Center. So, that's, that's my concern, that we're being taxed enough. And our folks that are staying at our units are, are paying the 12% tax, and if we had more tax, they may not stay with us. And we, we need the income. I mean, I'm retired, and we're trying to support things with the income that comes from the Airbnb, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can, at the end of the public testimony, I'd like staff to please address, or any of the advocates that are coming up, to address the, or Steve, or Vice Mayor, to address the Airbnb notice issue and financial impact issue. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Brian Larson, then Doug Warren, then Teresa Peck Montijo. Brian Larson?
Go ahead.
Okay. Doug Warren, then Teresa Peck Montijo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, city manager. My name is Doug Warren, and yes, I have been here a few other times on this. I am the current board chair for Visit Sacramento, and a regional director of operations for Welcome Group, which manages three hotels in the Sacramento area. I want to start by thanking all of you for your hard work and perseverance on this project. It has been a long road of learning and understanding and making changes to benefit the end user. As our customers pointed out during interactive workshops with the city and Visit Sacramento, without the enhanced convention space and additional ballroom, it would severely inhibit their ability to grow events in Sacramento. Without the second ballroom and additional east entrance, stacking groups would also not be possible. In order to grow the business, we must remain competitive and offer what our guests need. In order to create more jobs and push Sacramento forward as a destination city, this expansion is a must. The STID-funded growth will bring more visitors, provide additional jobs, and have a tremendous impact on my hotels, as well as those around the region. And I would strongly express my full support for this proposed STID, and hope you will support it as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Teresa and David Pham.
Hi, I'm Teresa Peck Montijo, a lifelong resident of Sacramento, City of Sacramento. Myself and another resident, Lucy Garcia, co-host an Airbnb called Casa Gardenia. It's on Garden Highway. And we do support the 1% assessment. We feel that it will stimulate tourism, and that Airbnb on Garden Highway would benefit from the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight. Very good.
David Pham, then Steve Young, then Shelley Moranville.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Councilmen. I really thank you for this opportunity to speak. I'm a architect and former short-term rental host. I recently just moved back to Sacramento after 17 years of being abroad, living there professionally, working abroad, and going to school and whatnot. And I hope that, you know, coming back, I've noticed some things that, you know, that I love, that has happened, like coming home to, from vacation and noticing some new things. But there are some things that, you know, I care not to, that are kind of a disappointment. You know, we, I left the city of trees and came back farm to fork, which I think is kind of kitsch. But let me get to the point. You know, I want to bring a different perspective, or an alternative perspective.
One minute, sir, so get to the point, okay?
Okay. The scope of the district is too large. It encompasses larger than the districts combined. It's over 218 square miles. It does, it's under, the people in the lodging in the report is under, under representative proportion to what is actually happening with the short-term rentals. They said 78% of the people approved this to move forward. If you just search Airbnb Sacramento, there's, that's 1,000. If you divide 3.14 million by the 268, that's $11,716 a year that someone is putting towards this 314 million. I think that this is disproportionate. The, the representation that's moving this forward, I didn't get this notice until recently. There were notices, you know, promoting it, but I didn't get notices to come and oppose.
David Pham, your time is complete.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Steve Young, then Shelley Moranville, then David Huber.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. My name's Steve Young. I represent Givicky Hospitality. We have three hotels in the Natomas area, and we are very supportive of the STID. We feel that the expansion of the Convention Center, along with the ballroom, will keep us competitive with other markets, and that will create compression in the market, and everyone will benefit. The Airbnb's, the hotels as well, and we're miles away from the Convention Center as well. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Next speaker is Shelley Moranville, then David Huber, then Royce Pollard.
Hi.
Hello again. Good evening. My name is Shelley Moranville. I'm the general manager at the Residence Inn Sacramento Downtown. I am also the vice president for Sacramento Hotel Association, and the second vice chair of Visit Sacramento. I'm here today to express my full support of the Sacramento Tourism Infrastructure District. The Sacramento Hotel Association and Visit Sacramento have worked together to propose the new STID, to fund the construction of the ballroom within the first phase of the project. When the arena was built, the community and leaders, the community leaders and city council members said other businesses would follow, and they have. Our city has continued to grow and attract businesses of all sizes. And the projects are dynamic and exciting. K Street Mall, Doco, R Street Corridor, the Marshall Hotel Conversion, are just a few of the really cool projects that have happened. And this has been due to your hard work and diligence to make things happen and move things forward. The passage of the STID is no exception, and is vital to continuing to grow our city. With all the businesses, in any business that we do, we have to listen to our customers. And our most loyal conventions have told us that they need more space. These are clients that we are at risk of losing if we don't take the time to listen. We also want to attract new conventions, larger conventions, that previously could not consider Sacramento. And in order to do this, we need to maximize the impact of the Convention Center expansion project now, and not later. The ability to host two conventions at the same time is a win for all businesses downtown. Restaurants, movie theaters, taxi cabs, our nightlife, and yes, hotels. This is another step towards ensuring that Sacramento is a true destination city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is David Huber, then Royce Pollard, then Amit Prakash.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is David Huber, general manager of the Crown Plaza in Sacramento. I also sit on and serve on boards for Visit Sacramento and Sacramento Hotel Association. In the original proposal, the Convention Center was to be built in two phases, with a 40,000-square-foot ballroom on the building's second level, scheduled for Phase Two. As a part of the process, feedback was given, and we soon realized, without the ballroom being built in Phase One, we could hinder clients' needs, as well as their needs, to grow and prosper in Sacramento. To address this issue, Visit Sacramento and the Sacramento Hotel Association worked together to propose a new Sacramento Tourism Infrastructure District, or STID, to fund the ballroom in Phase One of the expansion.
You know?
in Phase One of the expansion. The STID assessment would be added to guestroom bills of the city of Sacramento and unincorporated Sacramento County with the intent to pay for the project with the purpose of keeping visitor spending from these conventions in our market. Passage of the STID is vital to maximizing the impact of the convention center expansion project, as well as growing our convention capabilities. Project will allow Visit Sacramento to pursue groups we couldn't consider in the past due to space limitations and creates new abilities to host two events at the same time, which will increase convention visitors into the market. I would like to fully, I would like to fully express my full support for the proposed Sacramento Tourism Infrastructure District. The district will help fuel new tourism business in the region by hotel, which is located in unincorporated Sacramento County.
Thank you, Mr. Huber.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Royce Pollard, Amit Prakash, and then John Lambeth is our final speaker.
Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. My name is Royce Pollard. I'm the General Manager of the Doubletree Hotel in the Arden Area. Excuse me. I'm here tonight in support of the proposed Sacramento Tourism Infrastructure District. As one of the largest hotels in the Arden Area, we rely heavily on convention and group business. We feel that the expansion of the Sacramento Convention Center to include the 40,000-square-foot ballroom is essential to our ability to grow with our existing clients and to attract new tourism business to our area. Delaying this project until Phase Two puts us further behind our competition and further disrupts our relationships with clients that we have built with Sacramento region for years. Although we are not a downtown or a city center hotel, we recognize that the more convention business we're able to bring to the region, the better for all of us. The Sacramento Tourism Infrastructure District allows the convention center to attract larger conventions that will impact not only the downtown, but the entire region's tourism business, and we ask that you move forward with it. Thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amit Prakash, and then John Lambeth.
Actually, Brian Larson, I'm going to go ahead and make a small statement. Brian Larson, Halo Hospitality President, CEO, and also past Chair of the Visit Sacramento Organization. Wanted to make a point of three of my clients that are in outlying areas of this region. I have a hotel that I asset manage in Rancho Murrieta. I have one in El Dorado Hills, and I have one in Roseville. Each of these clients, I have taught to leverage the relationship with Visit Sacramento when there are large conventions in town, and we find that the rates on nights, there are as few as 500 hotel rooms occupied by convention visitors downtown. We get from 15% to 20% higher rates on those nights. We find that we sell higher occupancies on those days, and those are hotels that are at least 25 miles away from our city center. So, the compression does spread across the region, Wine and Grape Symposium being the most relevant because it fills every hotel room from here to El Dorado Hills and Napa. But all of the conventions that are large also do create economic impact. I would strongly recommend that our colleagues, that our hosts of Airbnbs leverage their relationships with us and ways to improve their businesses versus seeing themselves as a separate entity from our hospitality organizations. Thank you.
Thank you.
First Amit Prakash, and the final speaker is John Lambeth.
Good evening. My name is Amit Prakash. We own a couple of hotels in Sacramento. My family has been in business for the last 40 years. I've been in business for 16. And our hotels are located in two far ends of Sacramento, far north of, far north and far south. We do see the compression with the growth in occupancy and the growth in the hotel business. Right now, there's too many rooms coming in the market. In order to sustain the business, it's necessary that downtown expands the convention center, brings more business. Perfect example is last weekend. It was absolutely slow, and all of a sudden, everybody was sold out, and part of the reason was the convention that was brought in on a very slow night generated revenue for all the hotels. I support this, and I think the compression creates enough business for the Airbnb. If my hotel's on the far right, on the south side, and the far north side of Sacramento is feeling the impact of the downtown business and the convention, and I strongly believe that Airbnb will feel that business as well. When all the hotels are full, where do you go? You have nowhere else to go. You have to go to Airbnb. So, the compression is big enough, and the expansion will create a huge compression for everybody as far as low die as well. So, we're in 100% support.
Thank you.
And our final speaker is John Lambeth.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Council, John Lambeth, President of Civitas. Very happy to be with you tonight. As you know, our firm works on districts like this all around the country. It is great to be in our hometown tonight, working on one. I wanted to take the opportunity to respond to several comments that have been made earlier. First, that hosts weren't notified. Second, that they don't benefit. Third, the comment about the 12% already being too high. Fourth, that the district is too large. And finally, that Airbnb was not included in San Francisco. First, as it relates to hosts that have not been notified, what the speaker was referring to is hosts that are also not assessed. We have defined those that are being assessed as those that have been permitted, either in the city of Sacramento or the county of Sacramento. So, to the extent that there are hosts out there that have not been permitted and are not operating consistent with city rules, that's right. They weren't notified. We don't have any records of them. You don't have records of them, nor are they assessed as part of this district. So, all of the noticing was done exactly according to code. Second, that they don't benefit. It is clear that benefit is required and that they do benefit. You heard from several speakers about the benefit. In addition, Visit Sacramento went so far as to commission a benefit study that tells you in effect that the folks that benefit have been included in the district. Third, 12% is too high. We completed a national study for U.S. travel earlier this year about rates, hotel tax rates. The average across the destinations that we studied, the 100 across the country, 14.6 in larger destinations. That number goes up to 15.4%. You're at 12. Not to say that you should drive those rates up significantly, but adding one to your 12 is not going to make you anti-competitive. Next, district is too large. In fact, the district has been reduced. This district is smaller in size than the Tourism Marketing District, in part because we recognize we wanted to include only those that benefit. And finally, the notion that Airbnb is not included in the San Francisco district, that's true. That district was done many years ago. The new trend in, the new trend in districts is to include Airbnb in the district.
And those who, and those Airbnb's that have been properly noticed because they're subject to the overall assessment, they get a vote here, too, right?
They absolutely do.
They get to vote, and they vote no, that their vote counts as much as proportionally in proportion to others.
And the very last statement I'll leave you with is Airbnb has made a conscious decision to go after meetings group business. They've identified it as one of their three largest growth areas. They've launched two programs, one's called Airbnb for Business, one's called Business Travel Ready, in which they notify their hosts and figure out ways for hosts to get exactly this kind of business. And in fact, this is how Airbnb was started. It was actually some folks in San Francisco that started that from a convention.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully, hopefully, there'll be a lot more rooms and a lot more, a lot more bookings everywhere. That's the whole idea here. All right, Vice Mayor, and then we're going to take a vote.
Thank you, Mayor. You actually, I think, may have addressed some of my comments, so thank you for that.
It's, happy to do it.
I'm really in awe, first of all. I think, Mike, we should try to get a higher vote, and we should reject this tonight so you can go do more work building support. No? John, what do you think, third, fourth time? No? I was really impressed to see David Huber here from the Crown Plaza, because I don't think we've ever seen a hotel property outside the city acknowledge the reality of compression and the magnitude of the investment that we're making in the city here. I know compression sounds like a very technical thing, but imagine me cannonballing into a pool. That's the, yes, imagine that. Yes. That is the impact of this convention center. It is a big, big wave that affects properties. I'm not graceful, so, but it does have a huge impact. And I think that, you know, the testimony tonight from not only our hotel folks, but from even the Airbnb people who are here, maybe not in support, testifies to that. I would say, though, too, the VRBO and Airbnb sharing hosts got the benefit of not paying taxes for a long time. Their guests were not included until very recently, and that was an unfair advantage. Now that they're paying the 12%, I think it's great. But also, I think this is just part of running a hotel enterprise in your house. You still have the economies of scale to rent out a room. I don't really believe that this is a huge detriment, and we have a lot of hosts in my district who have impacts on the neighborhood, and my particular neighbors don't feel a lot of sympathy if the hosts have people who are paying 1% more. Hotels do a lot to mitigate impacts, to manage their crowds, and I think this is only fair. The last thing I would say, too, is that we have a deficit of rooms. If we're going to build this convention center, we need a lot more rooms. So, to do, to get the real impact here, there's not going to be a shortage of space in the convention center. There's going to be a shortage of rooms, and hopefully, this project helps drive more rooms. And then maybe next time, Royce, you can bring us cookies, because I used to work at a Doubletree, and part of the splash zone is from my Doubletree cookie experience. I'll move to close the public hearing, open and close the public hearing, and approve the item.
Moved and seconded. Very good. Thank you all. Very important and good hearing. Everyone's heard, and everyone gets, assessed gets a vote. Repeat, and we'll get the results of the vote next week. Okay. All in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you very much. Very good. Excellent. Appreciate it. Okay, let us move on to file item 17, which is 16, pardon me. 16. Let's wait just a second. Thank you. If everyone could please kind of clear out quietly, which you're appreciative. Thank you.
Mayor, a point of privilege.
Yes.
Ms. Dozier, would you be okay if we waived the staff presentation and made a motion to approve the item?
Thank you for however hard you prepared for that presentation there. I'm sure you did.
You have to vote still, though.
Okay. Is there public testimony on the item? There is not. All right. The item's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. That measure passes. We now move to item 17, which is the last item on our agenda tonight, and this is the request to apply for a very significant grant opportunity.
Good evening. I have two items I'd like to read into the record related to the Transformative Climate Communities Grant. The first relates to Section 3 of the resolution. It should be amended to read, "The city manager or his designee is authorized to execute the attached memorandum of understanding for the simple project for the city as a special leverage partner." Simple project stands for Sacramento Integrated Multimodal Place-Based Living. The second adjustment relates to the staff report. Item 7 should be adjusted or included to read, "Certifying, if required, for the grant application that SHRA pursuant to the memorandum of understanding and all of the cosponsors will have sufficient funds to pay invoices before reimbursement from the state." I have a very brief presentation related to the Transformative Climate Communities Grant. This is our second attempt at the Transformative Climate Communities Grant, and the grant provides up to $23 million available from California Cap and Trade Program. The project has the potential to fund these project types that are listed, including affordable housing, transportation, low-carbon transportation, weatherization, urban greening, and forestry. This area highlighted in the dotted red is the project area for the project. So, it goes all the way from the River District over to the Capitol. The Sacramento Integrated Multimodal Place-Based Living, better known as the simple project, has gone through a number of adjustments due to adjusting in the funding that was available. This is the current breakout of the major projects associated with the project. The most notable is the new Dos Rios Light Rail Transit Station at $17.5 million. We have a number of partners who are working very closely with us, and this is the list of our partners, including the co-applicants and the leverage partners. We are quickly working and approaching our deadline. The application is due at 5:00 on October 30. The next step in this process is a site visit that will be held between November 26 and November 30. All of you will be informed once we have a solid date. After the site visit, the staff recommendation is anticipated on being delivered on December 10, and an award being announced on December 20. That concludes my presentation for the evening.
Okay. Thank you. It's exciting. Councilmember Harris?
Thank you, Mayor. Tyrone, second time's a charm. I'm going to move staff recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
There is a second.
Okay. Is there any public testimony on this item?
There is not.
If not, then all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstain. Thank you. That, that motion passes unanimously, and we are done with the discussion items tonight. We now have council ideas and questions and public testimony, and items not on the agenda, and I'm going to have to excuse myself, Vice Mayor. Let us proceed.
Councilmember Jennings.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. On Friday, October 26, I know you've been waiting for this. This is the Carolyn Wenzel Elementary School trunk or treat. You're all welcome to this community-wide event. It will include raffle prizes, free pumpkins, games, music, food, and opportunity to have fun in a safe and secure environment. If you'd like to donate events for this event, you can drop them off at the school office. And if Carolyn Wenzel is not in your neighborhood, we have another trunk or treat on Wednesday, October 31, at the Union House Elementary School located at 7850 Deer Creek Drive. You can join Union House Elementary School for an evening of fun, food, candy, and lots of fun in a safe, in a safe place. These events are free, and all are welcome. And then the final one is the River Edge Church Harvest Halloween Festival located at 6449 Riverside Boulevard. We want you to join for their harvest and Halloween festival. It's a free, fun, family event, offering games, candy, food, and bringing together the community to get to know each other in a safe environment. So, once again, those dates are October 31 and October 26.
Councilmember Jennings, can I clarify? I heard trunk or treat?
Trunk.
Trunk or treat?
Trunk.
Okay, I was more scared the first time.
Yeah, you should have been.
I'm less scared now. Councilmember Harris.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I have only one announcement. There's a rather important project in my district called the Two Rivers Trail. We are having a community meeting to address neighbors' concerns about this. It'll be held at Caleb Greenwood School this Saturday, October 27, from 10 to 11:30. This is our third major community meeting on the, on the project. The project manager will be there, myself will be there, as well as other staff, to answer questions about the release of the mitigated negative declaration, which was affected yesterday. So, the environmental document is out. We're looking for comments and to resolve neighbors' concerns. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Councilmember Guerra.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Mayor. First of all, want to, again, for Mr. City Manager, if we could add the hardship waiver for the 911 recording fee request to figure out some kind of policy to come back to law and ledgers addressing that concern. And then, a couple of announcements. This Friday, we're going to have the first annual Spooktacular at Tahoe Park from 5:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. We're going to have a lot of costume contests. We're going to have a lot of bake sale as well, but we're, the neighbors are also collecting any used costumes for the Sacramento Children's Home. So, if you have a used kid's costume that you want to get rid of or donate to the Sacramento Children's Home, bring them out to Tahoe Park between 5:00 and 9:00 p.m. Children's Home, bring them out to Tahoe Park between 5:00 and 9:00 PM for the First Annual Spooktacular. And then, also, tomorrow afternoon, 2:00 PM, encourage my council colleagues, if you're interested, to come and join us for the childcare hearing on how we can expand, address the issue of the shortage of childcare in the city of Sacramento. If you could let our office know, just to make sure that we don't run afoul to the Brown Act, and we'll work with Ms. Capi here on the city clerk's office to make sure we do that. But we encourage anyone who wants to come out and talk. We've got a great lineup of experts and panelists. With that, Mr. Vice Mayor, thank you for a great evening.
Thank you for your leadership on that issue, Mr. Gara. Hopefully, a few of us can be there tomorrow. Finally, we have public comment on matters not on the agenda. Madam Clerk, I believe we have two speakers.
That's correct. Our first speaker is Noah Diggs, and then Alan Metcalf.
Welcome, Mr. Diggs.
I believe. Noah here?
He's coming.
All right, I'm upset, and I have reason to be. I heard y'all talk about code, compliance, and policies, and this and that, but y'all can't even follow y'all own codes, though. Section 148, Section G gives me the right to record. I've been arrested four times in a month and a half without committing a crime. Was asked to identify in the Sacramento Superior Court because the officer wanted to see if I was on probation parole, see if I had a warrant. The courthouses are open to the public. Ever since then, I've been getting fucked, I mean, I've been getting harassed by the police, and I'm going to say harassment because it's a continued course of action. So, when y'all talk about policies, what policies are in place that y'all talking about? Unum Sanctum, Christian Black Codes? What, like, what is going on, though? Because it's really hard for me to understand. I've been arrested four times and been let out of jail the same day because I have not committed a crime, and all of this is stemming from me going into a publicly accessible place where they actually recommend that you come in for educational purposes. Then I'm getting stopped on the street, on the public sidewalk, for filming a public official. But y'all talking about codes and policies? Section 148, Section G gives me the right to record. So, how, how are police pulling me over who I've never seen before, saying my whole name, address, saying I recognize you trespassing me from places where the owner never asked me to leave? They don't even come outside, and I have five trespasses, and it's last month and a half, four arrests, and convicted of no crime, committed no crime. And I want to say y'all look real bored up there. I've seen a lot of y'all look like y'all playing Candy Crush. You feel me? But, yeah, this is outrageous. I can't believe y'all's in here talking about policies and procedures. What policies are y'all going by? Christian Black Codes? Like, what is really going on?
Mr. Diggs, we have an Office of Public Safety Accountability that is part of what helps us respond to those complaints, and we'll have a city staff member come out and give you the contact information for them. They take complaints, they investigate them, and they do follow-up, and that would be one of the best places, because they're independent of the department, and they're there to help citizens like you.
But they're independent of the sheriff department and the, and the police department.
Yes.
Because I can't even request a supervisor. I've went in there several times, don't even, and now even allowed to speak to a supervisor.
Mr. Diggs.
I'm getting recorded when I walk into this pub, when I walk into the police department, I'm getting recorded by the police behind the desk.
Mr. Diggs, Chris Conlon, who's an assistant city manager, is going to come out and give you that information. Thank you for your testimony.
Our next speaker is Alan Metcalf.
Metcalf, maybe? Welcome, sir.
Hi, city of Sacramento. My name is Alan Melhoff. I'm a local to Midtown Sacramento. And I just have a question about the public housing in this area. I heard a lot of people talking about doing new hotels, building hotels and stuff around here, and I've noticed that there's a lot of, not a lot of low-income housing, housing around here. So, I've been noticing in West Sacramento, there's a lot of hotels open, actually, that are vacant. I was wondering if anyone has looked into maybe putting those for low-income housing for people like me that are desperate to find housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And Vice Mayor, I have no more speakers.
All right. With that, we'll adjourn. Thank you, everyone.